So I'm going to touch it but not bang it. Let's call to order the Village of Riverside, Illinois Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting and Public Hearings for Wednesday, September 26, 2018 at 7:03. Would you like to call, Allo?
Sure.
Commissioner Hanen.
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Here.
Commissioner Palatier.
Here.
Commissioner Marhol.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Scanlon.
Here.
Chairperson Mateo.
I am here.
We have a call.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve the Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting minutes of August 22, 2018?
Oh, I had one change. On page four it says kitty corner. I think it should be kitty.
That caught my eye.
Right there.
Okay. So with the change spelling of kitty corner, any other changes? Okay, so did we have a... Somebody move?
Hang on.
Okay, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Abstain? Okay.
Abstain.
Great. Thanks. That passes. So we will then move to our second public hearing, PZ 18-05, text amendment to zoning ordinance regarding the placement and regulation of small wireless facilities in conformance with the Small Wireless Facilities Deployment Act, PA 100-585. This public hearing is to consider proposed text amendments which include, but may not be limited to, 10-4-5 Use and Bulk Requirement Tables, Table 2, residential districts permitted uses, and Section 10-5-9 Use and Bulk Requirement Tables, Table 4, business districts permitted uses, to provide for use designations for small wireless facilities on private property in the different zoning districts within the village. Section 10-2 Use Standards Relative to Regulation of Small Wireless Facilities, Section 10-11-3 Uses Defined, and Section 10-11-4 Other Terms Defined, to amend certain definitions and add a definition of small wireless facilities and other such amendments as are deemed necessary for regulation of small wireless facilities in conformance with the Small Wireless Facilities Deployment Act, again, 100-585. The petitioner is the Village of Riverside. Just for the record, as we're opening this public hearing, is everybody in favor to opening the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. For the record, everybody is still present. There is a notice, public notice, published in the landmark on September 5 of 2018, and that will be entered into the record as an exhibit. And I'll let you take it from there. Would you like to be sworn in as a petitioner? All your testimony can be...
That is okay. So I included a memo that kind of summarizes some of the highlights about small cell in this public act, but I am going to kind of briefly go over it just so you have some context as to what's going on here. And this has really been more of a board issue than a planning commission issue. The board has already approved an amend-- code amendment, and this is more of a trailer cleanup to make sure that we are able to say in the places where we're outside of the public right-of-way that these are going to be special uses. But the broader context is this, we're all familiar with the big macro cell towers, the big cell towers with the antennas on top that have... municipalities have been dealing with those for 15 years, and they provide this base level of cellular coverage. And in recent, more recent years, the cellphone companies have been supplementing that coverage due to the increased data usage that everybody has with some... with these small cell installations. And small cells are different than the big antennas. They're put on at lower heights. Their sweet spot is about 35 to 40 feet off the ground, and they're typically placed at the top of a utility pole and with an equipment box on the side. And they provide coverage in a much smaller area than those big antennas. So they started out by putting them in areas of high usage, like stadiums and malls, around malls and places where there was just a big concentration of people using data. But what's happening now is the telecommunications companies are preparing to roll out a 5G network. So right now, we're all on 4G. If you look on your phone up by your bars, it'll say 4G usually, at least on the Android phones. And so that's the existing network, and 5G is this next step forward. They're finalizing technology for it. It's going to start coming online next year, maybe even late this year. And it's going to be able to handle a lot more capacity and functions than the current 4G network, be ultra-high-definition video, in addition to the texting and data streaming and all the other things that we've gotten used to. But one of the big, big things that it's going to do is be able to handle all these smart, smart things, that smart home applications that we now have. So people have smart thermostats now, the Nest thermostats that you can control from your phone, smart refrigerators, and coming online in a few years are driverless cars, and they anticipated all that kind of stuff, and it's going to be built out to a capacity to handle all that. And instead of adding more of the big towers, they're going to do all this through these small cell installations, and they're going to be every few hundred feet for each cellphone provider. And the way that they decided to go about rolling out this network is by trying to pass legislation in all the states that would enable, and this is the telecommunications industry I'm talking about, that would enable them to stick these small cell facilities on utility poles and streetlights and other places of the telecommunication companies choosing without much choice by the local government as to where they'd go. And so they've traditionally viewed local governments as obstructionist, and we all have different regulations, and they don't like that. And so they're trying to smooth their way to do this in what they view as a fast and economical manner. And so they introduced this legislation in Illinois, and I won't bore you with all the back and forth of the history of it, but ultimately, it was passed last October with some negotiations had taken place that made it a better bill, but it started out from such a bad place that it was still a bad deal for municipalities. And so there was still opposition to it even at the end. It passed by a fairly slim margin. There was some thought that the governor would veto it, but he eventually signed it in April, and it went into effect in June, the technical effective date in June, a kind of substantive effective date in August. And so we've been working with all our municipal clients to get these ordinances on the book and that reflect the requirements of the act. So you'll see that it was included in your materials, the Riverside version of that. And one of the things that this does, just to tell you a few things about what's in the act, we... it says, the act says that these have to be permitted uses in all the different rights-of-way in the village, and those rights-of-way include easements for compatible use, so that's like ComEd easements through the back of alleys and yards. So they're permitted uses in all those locations, and we don't have any choice over that. There are also permitted uses in areas that are zoned exclusively for commercial or industrial use. Riverside doesn't have any zoning districts that match that description. I think you were the only one that I was dealing with that didn't have any zoning districts where they had to be permitted uses on private property. And they can be regulated by our zoning codes in the other... in the private property outside of the right-of-way. And so that's what we're dealing with tonight, is making them special uses in the remainder of these zoning districts so that in the event that somebody, one of the telecommunications companies comes in and wants to put them on private property, where, say, they've made a deal with a business to put it behind the business or whatever, we can treat it as a special use and impose conditions on it. And that's kind of the important aspect of all these. We don't have a lot of control under the act, but one of the things that we do have some control over are design standards, how these look, so that they don't look terrible. So with staff, we're finalizing some design standards that the board's going to approve that we'll give to the companies when they come in that talk about how these will look when they go on the different utility poles. And the primary target of the telecommunications companies is going to be ComEd poles because they have to pay Riverside $200 a year to put them on our poles, which is not much, but it's up significantly from the $20 a year they originally proposed. And but under ICC regulations, they only have to pay ComEd like $15 a year, I believe, to put them on there. And they have a right to put them on ComEd. ComEd is used to having these go on their poles, and so that's kind of the default. So long as they can get to the pole easily with a ladder truck, that should work in a lot of cases to put them on ComEd poles. The village doesn't have as many accessible ComEd poles as other places, so there may be instances where they're going to want to put them on... put up new poles in our right-of-way or put them on existing lights. One of the things we're able to do, one of the changes we negotiated into the act last fall was to have special protections for historic districts. And I was part of the negotiations, and one of the... that was something that I did with Riverside in mind because with that, we were able to say, well, we are essentially all a historic district, so we're able in that case to say they can't go on our historic street lamps. And these may be shorter than they would want anyways, but we're able to protect them, get some special design protections as a historic district, which is great. And so the design standards are important, and those will apply regardless of whether it's in the right-of-way or on private property. But in the case of special uses that, like we're dealing with tonight, if somebody does come in, we not only have... they not only have to comply with our design standards, but we can say, well, we don't like this or that about it, and you have to take these extra steps in order to get our recommendation for approval or for the board approval. There's some... the act does a bunch of other things. There's strict time limits for permitting, limits our ability to say no, it specifies how high they can be, there's protections for limiting interference with public safety technology, all those kinds of things which you don't really need to drill down on as the PCC, but I just wanted to kind of give you an overview of how that would all work. And then in addition, there's... if they do go on our infrastructure, we do have an agreement with the provider that will kind of dictate some of the things about who pays for the electric and what happens if they're abandoned or change hands and all those kind of things. So we're working with the providers on those type of agreements as well. So it's starting out fairly slow. We've been approached by a couple different telecommunications companies so far who are looking just to, I think each put one at this point, saying their existing coverage in Riverside is pretty good, and they're not looking to do a lot at this point. But then again, they're still on 4G, so as demand increases and they go to 5G, there may be... there's most likely going to be increasing requests. So we'll have to see how this all plays out over time. But that is kind of the lay of the land. I'm happy to answer any questions about small cell in general. But the amendment that you're specifically looking at tonight, like I said, just works within the existing zoning code to make these special uses in all our various zoning districts where they are not on right-of-way, and just tweaks the definitions and such so that we have appropriate cross-references to our new chapter of the code, and everything kind of fits together. So with that, does anyone have any questions?
Questions for Attorney Mars.
Attorney Mars. Thanks for that overview. Could I ask a question? When it comes before our committee to look at a special use, would be... would we be looking at the design or the design standards you referenced would be developed and be the standard village-wide? And we wouldn't necessarily discuss those when it came before us.
So anytime anyone comes in and wants to put up a small cell in town, they would have an application that they fill out. They would be handed our design standards that they would have to adhere to, and in the case of where it fell within this purview, they'd be given a special use application and fill that out. So then they would come in with a design that met our design standards, but you, of course, I think with a special use, could play around with extra requirements or location within the lot and those type of things, make additional conditions that were appropriate in order to make it acceptable to you.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I need to pack up a little bit. This ordinance 2995 looks like it was passed.
Yeah.
I know you mentioned what's included in a... rights-of-way, and I just... I didn't see that defined anywhere.
Sure. So the right-of-way is area on... it's on page six. Area on, below, or above a public roadway, highway, street, public sidewalk, alley, or utility easement dedicated for compatible use. Okay? And so I was referencing, not only are we talking about our traditional streets and the adjacent... the right-of-way adjacent to those streets, but utility easements dedicated for compatible use, which is... which is what I was talking about when...
Thanks.
I saw a flag. What I was talking about when we're talking... when I was mentioning ComEd easements, for instance.
And I guess I ask in the context of where things stand in Riverside, where nobody can say with definitive nature where their property line ends and when the village's property begins. So, you know, the fear would be that whatever area off the roadway falls within this definition of right-of-way. And I don't know if that's been clarified, you know, especially since we have new poles that can go up in the right-of-way.
Yeah.
Is there a position to be taken that those parkways, because they're technically not privately owned, are free-for-all to put in new poles?
Right. So the way it's defined in the act, and those definitions are all right out of the act, the ones that you're looking at in the ordinance, those parkways would be included. And I know you said nobody really knows where they are, but somebody does. I mean, there's maps and plaits and all that kind of stuff. The engineers can identify them. It's not always easy to the visible eye like it is in some places where you know it goes right up to the sidewalk, right?
Well, that's my... that's kind of my point, is that this definition, let's say, for example, the... what's not owned privately goes eight feet beyond the sidewalk into the yard.
Yep.
This would allow a telecom to pay $1,000 to put a pole right in the middle of that yard, and there's nothing that could be done.
That is technically accurate, but at least based on our early conversations with the telecommunications companies, they don't want to squander any goodwill by doing nonsense like that. They're trying to be flexible, at least at this point, and I can't say that will last if we start saying no all the time. But they are trying to be flexible and want these to look good and want them in reasonable spots. There's no reason they would put it in somebody's front yard on that side of the sidewalk if they could put it on the other side.
But... and I guess as we're making these clarifying coordinations, can we clarify a certain distance from the middle of the street to be within the definition of right-of-way? Because it's not a matter of will they or won't they. But if we're going to pay... if we're going to... we already have an ordinance that allows them to do that, I'd rather do what we can do now rather than say, you know, you're burning goodwill by putting a pole, you know, every four feet, you know, down the...
Yeah. Well, I'm not sure what you're suggesting. I mean, the act says the right-of-ways are the right-of-ways, and the right-of-ways in Riverside are what they are. So we can't carve out the portion of the right-of-way that's on the other side of the sidewalk because that's not consistent with the state act, and we can't be more... we can't change those aspects of the state act.
Is there another way to address it? I mean, I...
I can think about it. I mean, it's not... it's not really an aspect for the PCC because in a right-of-way, there are permitted uses to begin with. So you're really only looking at changing the text relative to the... making them special uses.
Well, what we're trying to address is what's allowed on private property would be a special use that was come to us, as I understand it.
Yep.
So...
But a public... a public right-of-way is not considered the private property. Because it's dedicated for public use. All the parkways are.
Out of curiosity, do the design standards that you've developed address location on a lot?
Um...
Or a piece of property?
They have preferences, and we're not done with them yet.
Okay.
And so we can look at that aspect of it. And again, because it's an interesting point, and because we're a historic district, maybe we can use that to try to accomplish what you're saying, within both the design standards and possibly amending the act. But again, it's not something that we would deal with in the zoning aspect of it.
I had a question in the field that references use standards, and then it says, go to 814, Chapter 8.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the entire entirety of that chapter considered the use standards? I mean, how would we be applying? What would we be applying when a special use comes into...
Well, there's things all through the chapter.
So just for... I mean, we...
The chapter regulates how these are permitted, installed, maintained, operated, all that. So rather than try to pick and choose specific sections, I think it's appropriate just to reference.
Okay, all of it, as well as the typical special use application standards we'd be looking at?
Yes.
Okay.
Attorney Mars.
Good.
So if I understand you correctly, then each of these devices will be owned by a specific provider?
Yes.
Okay. So it's not like they share a device and then all their signals go out of one?
Correct.
So let's say you've got three providers, and they all want in. How do they determine who gets what location?
It's essentially a whoever gets an application in first for that particular location.
Okay.
And that's addressed in the chapter. And one of the things that we were concerned about was making sure that they are all owned locations. There's companies that kind of build things out on spec, hoping to then find a provider who's interested in that, and we didn't want them charging into all the towns and grabbing up the best spots and then trying to resell them or re-lease them to the providers. So in order to utilize the act and come in with an application, you have to have a signed contract with one of the providers that you're working on their behalf. So we were recently approached by somebody who was doing something for... was that AT&amp;T?
Mm-hmm.
Looking at a location on behalf of AT&amp;T. So they'll build it out, but AT&amp;T will operate out of that location. Right.
So once 5G rolls out, it's possible for small wireless to be every four to six houses, right? You say every 200 to 300 feet?
Yes.
So thinking of the poles behind our house, all our houses, if you can't get a truck back there, a ladder truck, then they're probably not going to choose that location?
Most likely not.
I like that answer.
Wouldn't the alternative be to throw a pole, parkway, and a thousand bucks a pole?
Yes.
Right.
Okay. So then I raised the question, what is the efficiency range of these devices? Do you need one every 200 feet or...
No. So what... the way it's been explained to me, each one will cover approximately like a three-block area.
Okay.
And so one of the hopes is that they will kind of work around the major streets at the edge to put them up on, you know, First Avenue and Harlem, et cetera, and that will provide decent penetration into a good portion of the village, and that way, you're not needing to put as many on residential streets. And maybe that in conjunction with, you know, the poles in back of the commercial districts running down Burlington and stuff will cover a fair amount of the village again. At least that's the hope and kind of how we want to guide everybody. All right.
In regard to the design standards, I know somewhere in here I read something about the poles are ideally like 40, 45 feet high.
Mm-hmm.
Does that efficiency range, whatever, does that vary? Let's say if you're just in a residential area and you don't have heavy usage, do you have any idea if the design standards could address having those poles shorter?
Requiring them to be shorter?
I guess require them if technically it's possible.
Uh...
I'm thinking my own street, so...
No, because the act specifies the maximum heights they're allowed to build to.
Okay.
And so that's outside of the design standard.
Okay. All right.
And they wouldn't compromise on that during negotiations due to the technological aspects of their need to be at a certain height.
Okay. Any questions for Director App? Welcome.
Thank you.
Does he do?
Can I... 814-9, general requirements. Looks like E3, screening for ground-mounted facilities. It's page 15.
Yes.
That item three, instead of professional landscape engineer, it should actually say professional landscape architect because those are the ones who are licensed.
Okay.
Well, this ordinance already been adopted.
Right. So there's likely going to be a point where we do clean up like that and tweak it for whatever reason, so...
I just don't want the village to be at the point where...
Landscape architect.
The utility provider says no such person exists.
Yep.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Can't tell wireless facilities are kind of Attorney Mars's wheelhouse.
So it's one of those things that nobody likes it, no towns are embracing this, but the telecommunications industry was...
Persistent.
Persistent and well-funded.
Indeed.
Was able to neutralize resistance to a point where they were able to enact this. And now at the federal level, there's FCC regulations that may further negatively impact our ability to control these. There... I think there was a vote today on some new proposed rules, which I haven't fully delved into yet, but to the extent that they alter any of this, we may be back again.
Later. Not next month, though. Unless we have more questions, would anybody like to make a motion to close or continue the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close this public hearing.
All in favor?
All in favor?
All right.
All right. Discussion?
We're very limited what we need to do here tonight, so I didn't particularly have anything further.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion then?
Nobody wants to be on record for this one.
Motion to amend the text of the zoning ordinance pertaining to small wireless facilities, as reluctant as the motion may be.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Aye.
Commissioner Scanlon?
Aye.
Commissioner Hannan?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Director App, do you have a village board update for us?
Yes, so we've got a couple of items. The text amendment for garages and driveways has been continued to the December 6 meeting, so the board asked that we look into further the taper for driveways and dealing with the width there, as well as width for aprons, and see if we might make that hopefully a little bit more, if needed, more workable in the real world, so to speak. There's some concern that the ability of a vehicle to actually exit the garage with only 15-foot apron is not realistic. So we're going to be looking into that a little bit further. There was also concern about making existing garages that are attached non-conforming with this and what impact that could have. And so they are asking for it to be amended so that the new standards would only apply to any new construction, and that any existing attached garage would be exempted from it and not be considered non-conforming. So it'd be, still be considered a conforming garage, so it'd only apply to new construction or new additions, perhaps. So we're exploring that language, and we'll have that for them at their December 6 meeting, along with some additional information about the driveways and garage width restrictions. So that conversation continues at the board level. They didn't necessarily feel that it needed to be remanded back to you for a whole new public hearing and discussion. They can kind of hash out the final details at the board level and try to get something passed. So hopefully it'll be approved before the end of the year, but we'll see, at least have the next level of discussion at the December 6 meeting. So that's the text amendment on garages and driveways that we had the public hearing on. The other update is regarding the stoops and porch modifications that we made to kind of allow the entryway. There was a little bit of confusion, or they're looking for a little bit more clarity on what is a stoop versus what is a porch, and maybe a little bit more discussion on the size. So they were comfortable with going to public hearing, but wanted some more clear definitions on what is an open stoop entryway, what is a covered stoop entryway versus what is a porch. So they wanted that, so Attorney Mars and I are going to kind of work on some definitions and bring this back to you to maybe have further discussion at the next meeting, and then if we're kind of have a consensus, then we can move to a public hearing after that on that. So we'll have a little bit more discussion, sorry, about stoops and porches and entryways and the encroachment into the street yard at our next meeting. The other update would be that the vacation rentals license provisions were amended to remove the license from the residential districts. So that ordinance passed at the last board meeting, which means that we have some follow-up zoning cleanup that we need to do. So we'll be having a public hearing at the next meeting on removing vacation rentals from the permitted use list for the residential districts. And then the board also wanted the commission to consider whether or not they should be made a special use in the business districts and have it go through that special use process for any that would be located in the business districts. So we'll have that public hearing and discussion next month.
That doesn't come to us first as a discussion and then preservation and then public hearing, obviously?
I think it's mostly, we considered it cleanup. It will have to go to the Preservation Commission for them to review the text amendment and provide the board with their comment, but...
Okay.
Yeah.
Director App, given to the garages and driveways, because when we were having those discussions, I didn't envision that all the existing attached garages would therefore then be non-conforming. So that was like a miss on my part, that I didn't, you know, ask those clarifying questions. So I guess I'm just wondering for further, further topics that come up, if we could just make it a point to specifically state, okay, for everything, you know, every building, whatever, in the current village that's impacted by whatever we're talking about, can we talk about the impact on existing structures as we go through that?
Right, certainly we can do that. As text amendments happen, we have a non-conforming chapter in our zoning ordinance, and so that deals with things that are made non-conforming by any zoning changes or that are existing non-conforming structures. So whenever we do a text amendment and something changes and something becomes non-conforming because of that text amendment, it falls under that non-conforming either use or structure sections of the non-conforming chapter. And in those cases, you're allowed to, as we've talked before, like with impervious surface variations and stuff like that. If you have, if you have something and you're non-conforming, you're allowed to keep it, you're allowed to maintain it, you're allowed to repair it. However, you can't increase the non-conformity. So if somebody had a non-conforming garage, they would not be able to expand the garage and, you know, go from a two-car garage to a three-car garage, or, you know, whatever the case may be. So they can't expand that non-conformity, but they are allowed to keep it, basically in perpetuity, so long as they're maintaining and repairing it. I guess the caveat on that is the substantial damage clause that, you know, should your house burn down or be damaged beyond 50%, then technically you're required to bring your property into compliance if you have to rebuild or you have to go through the variance process. So in my career, 17-plus years in planning, I think I've had two instances where there's been a house damaged beyond 50% and has needed to go through the variance process. So it's not a common thing that happens, however, there is always that caveat in your zoning ordinances that is that substantial damage, if it's damaged beyond 50% of its value, then it's required.
With that in mind, what was the issue at the board level on having it apply only on a going-forward basis?
It seemed the primary concern was that now something would be noted as non-conforming on a compliance certificate, and that could have ramifications for resale value or insurance purposes with what they might be able to, if there was damage to their home, what the insurance would cover.
That they wouldn't be able to rebuild in the previous footprint, they would have to...
Or there'd be an additional cost to bringing it back that perhaps the insurance company would not cover the full cost of that.
I mean, it's always been my understanding that there's a significant amount of structures, independent of this garage issues, that are non-conforming.
Oh, that is very true.
So we did not create a new problem by doing this.
Not really, no. There's, I mean, I would say more than three-quarters, if not more than 80% of the properties, really, I mean, in my heart, I kind of want to say like 95% of the properties in town are non-conforming, but maybe that just might be, it just feels like it some days, but, because I'm always, whenever I'm doing compliance inspections, there's always something. Either it's the driveway, because it's a shared driveway, so it encroaches into the one-foot setback, or, you know, you have a lot of existing homes that are only four-and-a-half feet off of a side property line, and the minimum setback is five. So most of the properties in town have some sort of non-conformity or other, as far as zoning.
Yeah, and I guess I bring this up because it goes, and we spent a lot of time talking about this, that the theory we all agree that we're going to work off of is to decrease the concrete in the front of the house.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess I'm just trying to get my arms around whether it applies only on new construction or old construction. I'm just missing how this is different than any other zoning change, given that objective and given that this came from preservation.
There was differing opinions.
I would just say I'm agreeing with Commissioner Hannan's observations, and in addition to that, as I think Director App pointed out, at that board meeting, driveways that are too wide can be reconstructed just as they are, they just can't be made wider, and that's in the code about non-conforming. But there were, I guess, two ideas that came out of that whole discussion that I just wanted to mention. One is, should this commission and should the board be looking in the future, it, something like this, like the garage changes, having that be more specific to the different residential districts, just like we have for the other bulk requirements, like setbacks and, you know, the square footage and the impervious surface and things like that. And another issue was, it would, to me, be somewhat helpful to have data on some basic things about the village residences, like how many attached garages are there, how many detached garages are there, how many detached garages in the side yard, or, you know, how many sizes of lots, or if, different things like that. I think that could be somewhat helpful, because I think when people look at issues in the village, they often are thinking about what's right around them, and those are the things they see every day, and those are the issues they see, and those are the kinds of lots they see. So if someone says, "well, this is going to affect, you know, 40% of the village," that could be true, it could not be true. I doubt that's really known. So it would be helpful if at some point, I think, the village develops some kind of a database on various issues like that, just like we now have a tree survey of every tree on public property.
So we are looking into trying to determine the number of attached garages. So we're working with our GIS coordinator to see if we can use our GIS data and the aerial photography to try to get a better gauge on, you know, all the lots that don't have an apparent detached garage on them. Can we then kind of deduce that high likelihood that they have an attached garage, and then we can kind of look at the driveways from there and kind of determine what it looks like that they have? So we can kind of get a more educated guess without doing a door-to-door survey of how many attached garages that we have in town. And so we'll be able to have a better number for that before the December 6 meeting, and I can certainly share that with you guys as well. So you have that information?
Well, it sounds very useful. I mean, I think as Commissioner Hannan mentioned, I mean, part of our vision of these changes was, you know, trying to reduce the amount of concrete versus the amount of green space in different lots, and that varies depending on the width of lots, and it varies depending on how deep the attached garage is, how deep the house is, where it sits. So those are, that's why I suggested the idea of perhaps having different standards based on different residential zoning districts as well.
So our next agenda item is another public hearing, but our petitioner is not here. Should we just open it and then continue it?
Yes, that would be best so that we don't have to renotice. We just continue it to next month's regular meeting.
Okay.
See the date.
Let me double check.
Have you heard from the petitioner?
Let me check and see if I've gotten any emails from her. She hasn't emailed this evening, I'm not sure. She knew she was supposed to be here, so...
Okay. So I'll call to order PZ 18-04, public hearing to consider text amendment at daycare centers, adult or child as special use in the B1C Commercial Zoning District, and concurrent request for special use for a child daycare center at 2722, 2726 South Harlem Avenue. This public hearing is to consider request for proposed text amendment to the Village of Riverside zoning ordinance to allow daycares, adult or child, as special uses in the B1C Commercial Zoning District, amending section 10-5-9, Table 4, the use and bulk requirement tables for the B1 and B2 zoning districts, to daycares, adult as special uses in the B1C Commercial Zoning District, and to make other such conforming changes to other sections of the Village of Riverside zoning ordinance as may be necessary. And two, a concurrent request for special use permit to allow a child daycare center in the B1C Commercial Zoning District for the property located at 2722, 2726 South Harlem Avenue. The petitioner is Marisol Castellano of Happy Times Child Development Incorporated. A notice of the public hearing was published in The Landmark on September 5, 2018, and will be entered into the record as an exhibit. All in favor for opening the public hearing?
Aye.
Everybody, for the record, everybody is still, all commissioners are still present? Director App, should we just take a vote to continue then?
I think so. So can we get a motion to continue?
Motion.
I move that we continue.
Do we know the date of next month's meeting?
October 24th, I believe. Believe it's the 24th. 24th.
Continue it to October 24.
Commissioner Scanlon, did you second?
Yes.
Okay.
So with the friendly amendment of including the date, please call the roll.
Hi, Commissioner Scanlon?
Aye.
Commissioner Hannan?
Aye.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. This hearing will be continued to October 24.
Okay. We have no old business, we have no new business. Anybody with information? Okay. Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.